I'll open this session of the Victorville City Council and all of the other assembly boards that we sit on. I'll go through that list in the regular meeting at seven o'clock. We will be going into executive session on a series of public items. And first, I'll let the city attorney highlight the items that we'll be discussing in the executive session.
Thank you Mayor Proton Rothschild. There are enumerated eight different closed session items. However, we are pulling items two, three, four, as there is no need to take action on those items this evening. We have items five, six, seven, and eight. Five is pursuant. 54956.9 subsection C, as is item number seven for SCLA, as is item number eight for the RDA. Back to item six, the property and the parties are set forth on the agenda. To the extent we take action on those items, we will report that action at the close of the --
And at this time, I'll open up anyone in the public wishing to speak under public comment on any of the items in our various boards. So, you know, I'll close that portion at this time, reopen it again at seven o'clock, and we'll be adjourned. Do they do the prayer?
Don't go to sleep. Don't go to sleep.
Oh, you know, I was looking up there. Okay, I got it. Larry White and, okay, Chief. Right, I haven't seen you in a while.
Don't know who the hell that is.
Here? I know.
Oh, yeah.
I'm assisted.
I'll open this session of the Victorville City Council, and we'll start with an invocation by Pastor Larry White from the Horizon Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance from Police Chief Reynolds.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much to all of you who are open to opening in prayer in these proceedings, and it is really an honor to be here with you as well. And so with that in mind, let's bow our hearts and heads before God and come to the Lord in prayer. Lord, we thank you as we consider this wonderful city that we are a part of. We thank you for the bright and amazing and awesome future that you have for this city, City of Victorville. Lord, we can't help but think about our school systems and the children in our schools and the school administrators and the teachers and everybody involved in raising up the future. Lord, we know that. We thank you for the future that this city has, not just there, but in businesses and so many other ways. We thank you for that future. But we know that, Lord, part of that is that we've got to make decisions now, and so I thank you for this group of leaders that have said, "I will help make that decision to build a bright future for Victorville." And so would you bless them today? I pray that you would give them wisdom and understanding, Lord, to make the decisions that they need to make right now, today, to build for the future. We love you. We thank you in your name. Amen.
I'll open this session of the Victorville City Council, library board, the rail authority, airport authority, the redevelopment agency, the financing authority, and the water board all at the same time. And if you have any comments, please fill out a comment card and put them in up here. For that, I have two up so far. And with that, I'll first come back to our city attorney and have a report on our closed session at five o'clock.
Thank you Mayor Proton Rothschild. We do have one reportable action that's related to item number seven on the airport authority agenda. The authority, by a vote of four zip, agreed to file a claim with the United States Air Force to seek reimbursement of certain environmental remediation costs incurred in connection with a parcel known as landfill number thirty-seven. So, we have, in order to avoid the running of statute limitations, this board, by four of vote, has authorized us filing a claim to protect our rights with respect thereto.
Thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and begin our public comment, and remember we are commenting on any item in all the attending boards that I just mentioned. First card I have is Daniel Cosino. I might be saying your last name. Pronounce it again at the microphone up here, sir. Get it correct.
If you remember, somebody can help me in Spanish, please?
Speak a little bit in the microphone.
My English is not too good. I try to, I am here because I went two weeks ago to the city of Victorville, and I was asking about my final fees, because my home, I finished to build all the home, but I don't have the, all the money to pay the final fee, and I occupy the premise nothing. And then I, I don't want a nothing fee, only, only you, only I needed the inspection, the qualifying fee, and pay the fee maybe in two years, because it's a lot of money, seventy thousand dollars.
You're still, I missed your question. I'm sorry. I have trouble hearing you myself. Which fee is it we're talking about?
Oh, the, the city, the city for me a home, and he charged me seventeen thousand dollars when I finished the home. After three years building my home, I have finished the home. Then I went to the city two weeks ago about that, to request some, I need some help to pay the final fees. I don't want a nothing fee, only I give me the opportunity to pass the inspector's warrant, because all, I have, I have the paper, I have all my inspection ready. Then I need only for the inspector of my home to check it up, and for, he give me the final fee, and give me the opportunity to pay in two years the final fee, because I can occupy the home. It's empty, it's destroying the window, destroying the doors, it's stealing all my stuff inside the house, because nobody can live in the house. This is the rules of the city.
Council can't respond to this, but what I will do is give this to the department head, and they'll get back to you tomorrow on this fee, and we'll go down the list of issues that you have to cover to get into your fee issue here. The planning department, I'm glad for the building?
I don't understand.
I won't be, this council won't be responding to that fee question at this time. I will be having a department, a department head handle your question for you as to dealing with those fees. Some of our statutes, federal, state, and our local statute, but, you know, different fees under your building code has to be applied to before you can begin, and that's all I can say about it. Am I missing something?
No, when I went to the city, he sent me here to, you can go to the meeting to fill it up a car, and you expose your, your problem you have, and you can get some solution there.
But your, but your question has pertained specifically to the code enforcement within the city itself, and I needed the department to respond to you on that. I can't do that.
Now, they send me here to deal with the, with the board.
The department we're talking about, planning or building?
If I might, Mr. Mayor, this individual has built a home, and he hasn't paid the fees, and he wants it final so that he can rent or lease or sell, and he has to get an occupancy permit, he's got to pay the fees to do so. He's requesting that the city council effectively loan him the money or put it on, or lien his property. And it's not something that the staff feels certainly would recommend against it, because if you have that kind of a policy where you're willing to allow a property owner to lien the property for the fees, think about the next subdivision with a hundred and fifty homes. So, as a policy of the council, we believe, after a very, very short discussion with the attorney, that probably couldn't respond anyway. So, my suggestion to the speaker is that he put in writing exactly what his request is, and will first pass it to the city attorney's office to see if it's even within a discretionary rights of the city council to do such a thing.
But what we need from you, if you want to pursue this, is to put your request in writing to the mayor, and I guarantee you, we'll get it to the property department to respond to your issue, but we need something in writing. And as a policy, you're not going to get that kind of waiver fee from the council here. That's not the way we would even be permitted to do business here. But you need to define the problem a little bit better than just the fees that you've got as a general statement here. I didn't know which department you were talking about until I got into the building issue, and then I felt.
No, I don't want a waiver fee. I am, I am accepting the fees to pay, but only I need the, the city to give me the opportunity to pay in two years, because I can occupy the property. The property is, is empty, the property, this is destroying, it's my property.
Mr. Cosino, the only way we can pursue this any better is I need a letter from you defining your problem and what it is, the fees that you're talking about, and the issues that you have with the city. As you stand there now and describe them to me, they're too vague and too broad-based, and as a policy, we're not going to be up here making a decision like that. It isn't even agendized. It's only a comment card, and that, I don't want to belittle what you're saying. I'm simply saying that we need something in writing from you before we can begin to seriously look at the question, and then we know what we're talking about, what the parcel is, what the building is, and that sort of thing. So, if you would do that, and address it to the mayor, and we'll get it right back to you, I guarantee you, that's a far better response than coming up on the public comment section and talking about the fee. That's why I couldn't follow what it was. You've got probably a more complicated story than just one particular issue.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And we've got your card, but send us a letter to the mayor. Next one is Dorothy Miller.
Dorothy Miller, I've had several problems lately. You people are all voted in to look out for the people. We pay you to do the job for us. I don't feel the job is being done for the people. I feel people are doing things they definitely should not be doing, like we got in trouble with Sandbag by one of the council members, and the Yuccaloma Bridge, the same council member pulled the same thing. We don't want it going down Green Tree Boulevard. Well, I'll tell you something, that was voted on years ago, and you just can't keep changing things around. It does what's got to be done, and it just keep holding it up, holding it up, and holding it up, and see what's going to happen. Then Hellendale, we don't like what was voted on. We're going to change it. We're going down to Laffco, we're going to do this, we're going to do something else. No, that's not right. I'm sorry. It was voted on. It was passed, so back off. Then the county, just recently, we got into it with the county. Here we are, a big city here, that is getting in trouble with the whole VITA, the whole group. And the airport is the same thing. It's the same thing. It needs to go back to VITA. VITA needs to know what is really going on and how bad they've been taken. Now we want to change it. We want to change things we made promises to, and it is absolutely ridiculous. Then we go to walk off of the dais, and I don't even want to talk to you. Now, you're voted in for the people. That does not work with me. I'll tell you that right up front. It does not work. Somebody needs to be recalled on this. Somebody needs to step down and do things right for this city. The city has been taken, and I mean taken good time. Thank you.
Next card I have is Mr. Tabor.
Good evening. I've emailed the council members on repeated basis, asking them to contact me on issues that I have with the way that our city is being run. I've gotten to speak to Mr. McAcron, had good conversations with him. I've gotten to speak with Mrs. Allman, I've had good conversations with her. You, Mr. Rothschild, have never responded to my requests that you contact me. I've emailed you, and I've handed letters to Mrs., to the city clerk. Mr. Caldwell, the same is true with you. I've asked you to take and contact me on issues that I have with the city. You won't talk to me. Same is true with Mr. Cobb Realis, who is not here. I don't know why you won't talk to me. I'm a citizen of the United States, I'm a voter, and I'm a taxpayer, and I live in this city. What more does it take to get you guys to respond to me?
Tabor, I'm not going to give you a lesson on the Brown Act or serial meetings and everything, but I think you're familiar with that, and you know very well. You can't take each council member sitting up here and get them on a private conversation, three or more of us up there. Fortunately, you identified just two of us and not three of us, and out of ignorance, it could have been three or more of us in the same.
No, I identified all five of you, sir. All five.
All right. But one of the reasons I didn't respond is I knew very well that you had already contacted one or two or more council members. And I'm not going to put the city into that or my position into any issues that you have. You have concerns, raise it with a council member, raise it with staff members, but don't come and try to set up a serial meeting, because that means all five of us.
I'm not trying to set up a serial meeting. I'm trying to have a discussion with you, sir. Now, near as, near as I understand, you know, I understand the Brown Act, but I also understand something that's called.
I used a minute of your time, so you've got two minutes to go.
I understand something that's called the First Amendment, which I have the right of freedom of speech, which means I believe that I am able to speak with my elected representatives and have a conversation with them. Now, maybe it is that you only represent the people that you agree with. I don't know. You know? But I believe that you're supposed to represent the people that you agree with and the people that you don't agree with. Having said that, okay, the city council has decided to take and put thirty-one CCTV video cameras into this city. I disagree with that. I believe it's an intrusion on the privacy rights of all the citizens of this, of this city. I'm asking you now to take them down. You're wasting taxpayer money, and you're intruding on privacy. And I'd like to provide you with a letter, not a letter, but an article from the British Broadcasting Corporation. May I come forward and bring that to you? Do I give it to the city clerk?
Give it to the city clerk. You've only got about a minute, Mr. Tabor, so why don't you finish talking first, and leave that, and we'll make copies.
Funny for every council member that's here. You know, but, but in London, it reports that they have over a million cameras, and in order to have one conviction, it requires one thousand cameras. Now, now, you have thirty-one cameras in the, in the City of Victorville so far, so in order to, by the, by the standards that are in London, where they have a million cameras, you're short about nine hundred and sixty-nine cameras in order to be able to acquire one conviction, okay? I don't believe that you're going to provide Victorville with better security, okay, by having these cameras, and I'm asking you to take them down, because they are an intrusion on the privacy rights of all the citizens of this city, okay? Furthermore, I talked to Mr. McAcron about this as well, and I, and I, because he said, you know, Brentwood is a real problem. I lived there. And I said, "Mr. McAcron, I'll tell you what, why don't you come for a walk with me through Brentwood? I've been there in, through, in the park, morning, noon, and night, and nobody has ever once said a bad word to me. My wife and I, without even thinking about it, yesterday evening at about eight thirty-five, went on a walk around Brentwood, and nobody threatened us at all. Nobody said anything to us, good or bad. And I'm inviting you to come with me to find out that you don't need cameras in Brentwood. You don't need the cameras in any of Victorville, and you need to take them down right now."
Yes.
"I do not want to trade my freedom of movement for security. If anybody needs security, they're welcome to go down to the, to the sheriff and file for a CCW and carry their own security with them. It's a, it's a, it's a right that's granted by the Constitution, and it's affirmed by also the sheriff of this, this county, that he will give a CCW license to anybody that wants to be able to carry their own weapon, to provide their own security. Isn't that not, not correct, Mrs. Allman? That's what we talked about, isn't it?"
Yes.
Tabor, your time is up. You, I gave you an extra minute, because I interrupted you. Your letter is in. We've had that. I understand your point.
Let me say again, I would like to have a conversation with you, Mr. Rothschild, Mr. Caldwell. Would you please contact me?
Next, and the last card I have in the public comment section is Stephen Tenierpour, and I do know, I've read your letter. Yes, sir. Interesting.
Honorable Mayor Proton, and honorable council members, actually, I live in Orange County, California. I have a property here. A few years ago, actually, I was asked by a letter from the city, city engineer's office that they wanted to get sliver of it for widening his fair road, and I probably was one of the first ones did that, and I felt I was glad I did it. And I found out they really did a good job. They promised, they delivered. And I've been watching the city, actually, as I deal with other cities. As an engineer, worked for forty-eight years in industry, and it's going to be tough for me to make positive comment now, if you hear all the negative here, but I'm not going to be affected by it. But I want to just say what I really feel I came here to tell you, that I, guys, you guys are doing a great job, and I feel impressed that, everything is relative. And I think, I personally have taken things for granted when I, I get a lot of stuff, when you go outer areas, you deal with other agencies, public agencies, a lot of money being wasted. And actually, I was watching, you guys got money from Safety Lou. For those who don't know what that is, is where the transportation money comes in from federal, for the audience, that you guys got that money, and that was commendable, because I'm in the industry, I know that. As for High Desert Corridor, I'm not sure what's going to happen to it, but you were proactively involved doing it. And one of these is, one of the, last month, I was calling for a question about some project, whatever it was, with a city I never really had an opportunity to meet. These people are so busy, so I appreciate all of that. I was on the phone, and I listened to your tape in there that's about the recycling program. I said, "My God, I don't get that from any other place that I've..." And so I felt impressed, and even though I see negative over here, maybe I want to retire here someday. I want to let you know, I'm just here to give you some positive input, what I feel. I have no business with you guys right now, no hijab, nothing in here, so there's no, the view that I'm giving is honest and proactive, because usually we come in, complain, and that should be done too, and I can see that. I commend you for being recipient of complaints also. It's a free country, and I enjoy, I'm an immigrant here, been here for forty-four years. I arrived as an engineer. I've been involved for years, and I feel like sometimes we take things for granted. So, I wanted just to give you a testimony, what I feel. If you want to talk to me, why, in detail, we're glad to do that. And also, as a gesture to you, I wrote you an email saying that, since I'm a volunteer for disaster, for the governor's office and emergency services, I volunteer, my passion is earthquake, you're very close to the fault, and I will be glad to come down and...
You sent your letter out to all the, all the department heads in the city?
Yes. And I don't know, I just sent it to the council members, and I think.
Well, I sent it out to the department heads.
The city manager also has a copy. So, whatever you want to do with it, what I'm saying is, I'll be glad, if you want your engineering department anywhere, the emergency management, I'll be glad to come down one day here to look proactively, because sometimes my job is to tag after disaster as a volunteer for free. We don't charge. So, I guess it's just one of those things. As a matter of fact, I want to second the pastor's comment about, you know, that, the prayer, and I believe in the wisdom of God. We do a lot of things, we make mistakes, screw up, so I, I believe that the prayer was pretty powerful. Looks like you still have God in your standing room, so this is good.
Your time is up. Mr. Tabor there, get on me if I, if I give you any more time. You're running complimentious. I don't want to run too long on that one, too. Thank you, sir. And it's out, and please get your name in to us, and we'll find a place for you with that resume.
Ask me in a yawn. Thank you.
That's all the comment cards I have. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, moving on. Let's see here. We're on the, I'm just looking at my agenda. We're through public comment. I need something else. Oh, wait, 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 wait. Okay, I got it. Okay. City council first, is that, is that what we want?
Library board.
Usually, I have my own in front of me. Okay, city council. Item number two, we've already announced the legal conference. So, item number three, we're moving on to item number three? That was, city attorneys, I recovered that one. Item number four, legal counsel.
To vote on item number three on the library district, it's a consent calendar.
This doesn't read...
Mine's reading, yeah, mine's reading closed session.
Now, if I had, I should have go get mine that's on my desk, because I'm used to looking at this one here.
I'll go get you one.
But, you know, excuse me a minute. I'm sorry. This'll save time if I just run and grab my own. That way I...
I clicked on agenda, and I get...
At the correct screen now, Mike.
I'm on the library agenda. I don't know who everyone else is.
All right, ma'am.
We're on the same page.
All right, we've gone through our public comment. So, moving into agenda item on the city council, the first one is the legal announcements. We've made all of those on the first beginning. Okay, that's done. The library.
We have a motion and a second on the library board of trustees, item three, so now I
Try this again. Okay. Okay, let's go. Let's go, we're good. There.
Yes.
Okay, yes. Okay, the Rail Authority, Mr. Caldwell?
Yes, the, there are no revisions or additions to the Rail Authority, the only item is item three, the Consent Calendar.
Move for approval?
And as to the Airport Authority, again, there are no revisions or additions, the only remaining item is item three, the Consent Calendar.
Okay, moving into the Redevelopment Agency.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'll be abstaining from the Consent Calendars, there's two items on there for Clansman.
I'll move approval of the Consent Calendar, item three.
Item number four, the Possible Action Regarding the Vida Tax Increment Distribution, this one. That's just to submit the report, is that correct, Mr. Metzler? Just, it's on the RDA section, so it was just submitting the tax increment report. Is this the one we're going to continue? Is this, I thought that was on the City Council.
I think this is the item you want to continue, basically to have a full council discussion on it.
We're going to discuss, as a matter of fact, this discussion was teed up nicely in the Daily Press Sunday Edition, so if you have any, you know, kind of a question as to what we're talking about in this area, just go ahead and see if you can get access to your Sunday Edition of the Daily Press and read that story, because it ran pretty true to what we were talking about. So, we'll continue this one until two weeks, next regular council meeting. The Finance Authority, we have, we don't have any revisions, do we, we have the Consent Calendar.
Approval?
Next is the Water District. Consent Calendar.
Approval of a public hearing.
A public hearing on item number three, for against the adoption of resolution entitled, "Resolution for the Victorville Water District Amending Section Three of the Victorville Water Code," Resolution 08-015, revising water service rates and the periodic fees and charges associated with such water rates. I'll open the public hearing on this item. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on item number three in the Water District? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel.
For approval?
Item number four, approval of the minutes.
Approval?
Item number five is a request approval of the reclaimed water service agreement between the Victorville Water District and the High Desert Power Trust Company, and this is also a companion item number four on the City Council Agenda. Move for approval?
Second.
City Council Agenda, anything, seeing none of the revised, item number three is a request to approve the Consent Calendar.
Approval?
Item number four is a request approval of reclaimed water service agreement between the Victorville Water District and the High Desert Power Trust Company, same as the item number five, the preceding agenda. Item number five is a request to adopt Resolution 10-076, approve and authorize to direct the mayor to execute a resolution of issuance of revenue bonds by the CSCDA for the purpose of financing development of the certain facilities in the benefit of this Victorville Pacific Associated Entity, a resolution of the City Council, City of Victorville approving the issuance of the California Statewide Community Development Authority multi-family housing revenue bonds for the Raydale Drive Meadows apartment.
I'll move approval of the proposed Resolution Number 10076.
Item number six, the request to adopt a Resolution 10-069 entitled, "A Resolution the City of Victorville, Revising the Table of Organization, Fixing the Rates of Compensation, Establishing Fringe Benefits for Employees, the City of Victorville," and supersedes Resolution 09-082 and subsequent amendments.
Move approval of proposed Resolution 10069.
Item number seven is request to approve the annual agreement with the Charles Joseph and Associates for Risk Management Service and Safety Consultant Services in an amount not to exceed $114,972 for the 2011 fiscal year. Hey, once you get in the swing of it, it's not so bad, is it? Got to get your eyes adjusted to what we're looking up here, and then it rolls pretty easy. Number eight, a request to approve the change order number four on the landmark structure for the Elevated Reclaimed Water Tank Project in amount of $35,689.50. Item number nine is request approval of the annual agreement with Joe Gonzalez and Son for providing professional legislative services in the amount not to exceed $33,240.
Move approval?
Item number ten is request to approve the Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Victorville, the High Desert Power Trust, and High Desert Power Project LLC.
I have a question on this one. I'm sorry.
Question?
On number ten.
Yes.
There was no time item on the MOU, and there were a lot of uncertainties.
This MOU actually started out as a series of MOUs while we were developing the Victorville Two Power Plant, with an intent to eventually purchase the natural gas capacity and also tie into the existing power lines that currently serve the High Desert Power Project. As that project stalled, the MOUs sort of went through several iterations and essentially were watered down to just agreements to agree in the future at some point. And although we do have an option, it is a five-year term at this point, with some calls in there essentially. If they get a true offer for that capacity, then they have to give us a notice, I believe it's a thirty-day notice, at which point we could then match that offer. Based on our read of the power markets, we don't believe that there's going to be any interest in that power, but, or in that gas capacity, but just in the event, they didn't want to be sort of hamstrung by this agreement, so we'll put that in there.
Right, it was kind of.
Right.
All over the place.
It is very watered down from its original intent. Originally, it was going to actually line out exactly how much capacity we would get for Victorville Two, and set a date certain as to when we would get that capacity based on construction of the plant. As everything sort of slowed down, we still needed the agreement, so that we could have that in the future, in the event that we are able to build Victorville Two within that timeframe. We had it coincide roughly with the credit that we have with GE, and also roughly with the likely timing for a plant such as Victorville Two, estimating three to five years somewhere in that timeframe.
Thank you.
Item number eleven is request to extend the appointment of the existing board members of directors for the Regional Center of Victorville Development IAC for another one-year term.
Approval?
Item number twelve is consideration of the possible action to establish time limits on comments by council members.
What would the time limit be?
There is no time limit for council members.
No, I understand that, but if this was, if this was accepted, what would the time limit be?
If you wanted to put a limit on the council's comment times, the council could vote for it. About thirty seconds or fifteen seconds, how about five hours?
Five hours.
I mean, I understand anybody's frustration if somebody like myself or anybody else is rattling on and you'd wish I'd shut up or something, but the point is that to establish any limits on the five council members up here, to me, would be a mistake. I don't think that's where, it's appropriate for public comment, it's not agenda, the staff, the council, no one, the public is not aware, ability to respond to that except to take input and then respond at a later date. But when you're up here dialoguing and everything else, I don't think there should be any restrictions in any council member's time on here, and if the council member's out of order, the mayor or any other council member can say, "I declare that council member out of order," and three votes can shut him up. That's Robert's Rules of Order. So, it doesn't take the mayor doing it, anybody can say, "Hey, you're beating a dead horse, we want you to shut up." Three votes say, "Shut up." That board member, myself included, should shut up. So, this, I would, for me, for my personal, and maybe Rudy has something, you know, you got a fifth member here that's not here on this issue, but if somebody feels that there's, it's important to put time limits on the council members' time in responding and dialoguing up here, then a council would be free to do that.
It would be hard to set a specific time.
I think it would be a mistake.
But I think after a while, when we're discussing something, if we keep going on and on, the audience takes a nap, and we lose them. That's not the purpose.
You always have the check of three people on the council can say to the fourth or fifth person or anybody else, that, hey, majority says, "We've heard enough, quiet, stop." And then the person has to stop. Any other comments on number twelve?
I would just say that to, in to try and restrain the deliberative process, I mean, we're, we sit at this dais to exchange ideas and information, and sometimes debate, and sometimes even argue. Have an artificial time limit imposed on the deliberative process, the actual legislative process of moving government forward and doing the things necessary to make the city function, I think would be a bad deal. Or you can say that one item, maybe you should only talk for a minute, there should, sometimes items that we would talk about for an hour, and how do you know, how do you look into a crystal ball and say, "One issue's more important than the next," and then force dialogue into a timeframe? I just think it's unworkable. I won't be here to have to deal with it if you all decide that's what you want to do, but I would feel very, very nervous about time constraints.
Moving-
Five hours, don't they?
Not lately. I remember some in the old days that went past midnight, but not recently, not since we've been in this nice facility with our, even with our long agendas, I don't think we've hit a midnight session yet. Okay, moving on to council reports.
I have nothing.
I have none.
And I have none. Agenda items for upcoming council meetings, is that a new item here? Any, anything for new agendas? All right, that's it, meeting's adjourned.